Good morning. We're ready for our September 1st board meeting. First thing up is introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabelle Hadamio, Commissioner.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Ms. Gruney, County Council.
Annalissa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Those that are working remotely, how about you, Lilia?
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Good morning.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Johnnie Stokes, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
John Snyder, Level of the Public.
Mary Ottley, Finance.
Tammy Webb, Human Resources.
Good morning, Sarah Hartstein, Health Department.
I see Nancy's name is on here. Has she checked in?
Okay, we have Nancy Wise.
All right, Nancy Wise here.
Good morning. And did we get Danielle Brown?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, great. Are there any announcements? Hearing none, we'll go on to comments from the public. Hearing none. Third item, review and approve the agenda. There are a couple changes that we have since it was printed. Let's see. As part of 5.1 or immediately. Let's see. Well, it's Brian Lee and he will give us a short DOC update. But we'll also list it under New Business 8.1. Notice to apply for COVID-19 funding. And so to be efficient with people's time, we will have 8.1 as part of our DOC update. Another change under New Business is 8.5, discussion of a micro shelter project in cooperation with the city of Corvallis. And then Vance, you had something for us.
Yeah, I'd like to ask before we go to executive session.
And following this meeting, it will not be a go-to meeting. Executive sessions are not subject to the video permission allowed by the governor way back in April. That would be under ORS 192.660 subsection 2 subsection F, as in Frank, to discuss documents that are cloaked in attorney-client privilege.
Okay. And we will do that at the very end of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, the agenda is approved. There have been no chair decisions since our last board meeting. So we're on number five work sessions. 5.1, update from the successor to the EOC, the DOC. And I think we will start with Brian Lee, if you're ready, Brian.
Yes, I am. So, morning folks. My actual late update, other than the usual, we've transitioned over to the DOC, which Danielle can cover in greater detail. We're continuing to support them and kind of just get everything ready for the push in the fall. And one of those pieces of getting ready include seeking and planning for an alternate EOC if we cannot use fire service. And that might be late fall or winter time. And also just a reminder, it is National Preparedness Month, and we've had a lot of fires breaking out around us. So we're just plugging that again, wildfire preparedness, and kind of getting back to the reminder that there's other emergencies to be prepared for. So we're just taking all that back on again and starting our planning processes. And that's all I had to report today.
Okay. Brian, would you like to handle 8.1 under New Business, talking about notice of intent to apply for COVID-19 supplemental funding?
Pat, before we move on, I have a question for Brian.
Okay.
Brian, could you keep us in the loop in terms of when fire changes are open? Sometimes those are posted on billboards, but so many of us don't drive by those billboards in the morning. So it'd be helpful to just email would help if there's an alert or danger.
Okay, yes, absolutely, no problem. As for the supplemental COVID funds, that is the Emergency Management Performance Grant Supplemental. And we intend to apply for basically a command set for a mobile EOC option. What we found early on at the fire training centers, we need more space, especially during the COVID emergency. And we were considering renting big, kind of like event-style tents. So this would fulfill that need. The grant is about $17,000. It's actually pretty small. And we're waiting to hear regarding match, so the 50% match component that we have to hit. So we're waiting to see if you can use care funds or not. So a little more to come on that one, but be intended to apply for mobile EOC command tents.
Okay. Do you need any board action at this point, or is this just informational, Brian?
I think that one was more on the consent piece of it.
I believe there's a
I do too.
Motion.
I would move to approve the notice of intent to apply for the EMPG COVID-19 Emergency Supplemental Funding through Oregon Office of Emergency Management.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Motion carries, so keep us posted on the progress on that. That sounds like a great addition to our preparedness kit.
And Trish, I did actually have one big update on school PPE. I know I sent you guys an email about that. I just got information that at least five in IJ received masks from the Lynn Benton Lincoln ESD on Friday. So they just sent me some form of the numbers. I still don't know all the different school districts in our area that actually got it. So I'm tracking that information down. But they did start receiving that this last Friday afternoon. So that was finally flowing down to the schools. And the last thing was, I emailed Office of Emergency Management regarding the extension of the emergency declaration at the state level, and they had no information from the governor's office about it. So the assumption is she's going to extend her emergency declaration. But at this point in time, there's no information on them. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Any more questions for him? Hearing none, we will move on. Danielle Brown and Charlie Fountain is also listed, but looks like Danielle is ready to go.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Charlie is on vacation this week, so it's just me.
All right.
The DOC has been very busy, as we were under the EOC, to continue to support the COVID response in the community. We have continued to progress with our RV car camping out at the fairgrounds and have all 11 of those slots filled. They are needing some additional social case management support. So we're working with our partners at Corvallis Housing First to provide some additional support to Lynn McKee and her site manager out there to help assist and support the individuals that have been placed in those RV car camping spots. We are continuing to work with the city of Corvallis on the capacity and concerns about the men's cold weather shelter. And we'll talk a little bit about that under 8.5 with the micro shelter discussion. Sarah Hartstein is also on the call today. And we are talking about how to support the homeless individuals moving into the winter season with the limited capacity for the men's cold weather shelter in order to manage the COVID risk. So we'll continue to have that conversation and work with the city and Unity Shelter around supporting that work. We have onboarded our five new emergency hires for our communicable disease program to help support these contact tracing and case investigations. They are all five hired and in place. They're all going through their training right now. We expect to have them up and working more independently in about two weeks. There is a lot of moving parts with the contact tracing and case investigation process. So that is a little bit time-consuming, which includes working with Oregon Health Authority and getting access to their statewide database. And that can be cumbersome. The final thing I'd like to update you guys on is Oregon Health Authority has created some contracts with community-based organizations to help support and manage individuals who are COVID-positive or who have been exposed to the COVID disease. So we are working with some of the community-based organizations that have received those contracts. We will be working with those community-based organizations to complete memorandums of understanding under the OHA contract so we can help support the CD team and managing those individuals who are COVID-positive. These contracts came out, they just got finalized about a week or 10 days ago, maybe two weeks ago. And we had our initial meeting with Oregon Health Authority last week to help understand what these community-based organization contracts can do. So we are meeting again today internally, and we'll be meeting again with Oregon Health Authority hopefully in the next week or two with the community-based organizations to help determine how and when we'll use those community-based organizations to support that system. So I think that will be a big benefit to our public health folks and our communicable disease team that have been so overwhelmed for so long. So I'm really looking forward to continuing that work and creating some additional, as Joe would call it, depth on the bench.
Any questions for Danielle?
I have some questions. In terms of, Charlie mentioned at the last meeting, making sure that people understood that it was important to get their regular flu shots in the fall. Do you have an idea when that may begin?
We just talked about that during our DOC briefing this morning. Lilia, I saw you raise your hand. You want to jump in?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Danielle. What I can tell you, Commissioner Hadamio, is that I'm working closely with Charlie and others in CD to start getting some of the standard flu vaccine information out there. We want to clarify where we can, the difference between flu and COVID, as well as really encourage the importance of getting vaccine, the flu vaccine, early to help prevent impact onto our clinics and hospitals. I think that we're trying to encourage everyone to get their flu shot by October.
And clearly, the communication has to be really clear that we're not talking about vaccines for COVID, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
I had a question for you, Danielle. I've heard a couple reports, I think this morning on NPR was one of them, talking about contact tracing scammers. And so, hey, I'm from the Health Department and send me some money or give me your social security number. Do your contact tracers, I guess, are they aware of this potential problem? And what kind of solution is in the works?
We are aware of this potential problem. This has been an ongoing issue, really since earlier on in the COVID crisis, that there's been these scammers that are calling and sending messages via email and text message. Just for a point of clarification, our contact tracers and case investigators will never ask for social security numbers. They will never ask for money. So we are, Lilia and her team have done a lot of community education with some of our daily videos around what contact tracing is and what those will look like. Lilia, you want to talk a little bit about what you guys have done?
Yeah, thanks, Danielle. So having scanning talking points as part of our contact tracing talking points, really as Danielle mentioned, has been a key aspect of those communications since the beginning. We worked really quickly, I think early on, I think it was Kelly Losi, who worked to establish a process whereby individuals could call back the Health Department and confirm the identity of the person who was calling them. So in every message, you know, we have reiterated that we would never ask for bank information, payment, other types of, you know, information, as Danielle had mentioned. But we also include how individuals in our community can verify that they are speaking to a Benton County Health Department contact tracer.
Great, I appreciate that update and glad our team's on top of this. It's, contact tracing's important and a tough enough job without crooks messing things up. So appreciate that information.
I do have one more question.
Okay.
Danielle, I know that yesterday, there was a proposal deadline to respond to a request for proposals from the Oregon Health Authority to their equity fund. And that fund would also provide CARES Act dollars to service organizations or others who could address the needs of folks that had disproportionate effect of COVID on them. And I know that there were at least three applications from local folks here in the Lynn Benton Lincoln area and in Benton County in particular. With all of this new money coming in and the CARES money coming in so fast, are you and your team able in operations center to keep track of what capacity we might have to address community need? And are they, these folks consulting with you as the Health Department about need?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner. You know, unfortunately, we, because these are coming fast and furious, and a lot of time these grant applications have a very short turnaround time, we haven't been able to track those. And we haven't had a lot of contact with the community partners that are applying for them. This, the Oregon Health Authority grants that I was talking about just a few minutes ago with the community-based organizations are a perfect example of that. Oregon Health Authority rolled those out very quickly, had very short turnaround times. And now there are 10 organizations that have been identified for Benton County to help support the contact tracing and such. There's been conversations with public health administrators, but not really any coordination. So we're trying to stay on top of that as best we can. But with the amount of those that are coming out and how quickly they are being distributed, it's really hard to track all of that in any kind of meaningful way. So as soon as we hear about them, we're trying to make contact. But oftentimes, that's after the contracts have been awarded and we're having to work backwards, which is what we're doing with several of these right now.
That's a frustration, it seems to me, that it puts a lot more of a burden on your staff to work backwards than to try to be involved from the beginning. But I understand that everyone is trying to get the money out as fast as they can.
Yeah, and I think that this is a function of just trying to get money out and supports in place as quickly as possible. And ultimately, we'll figure out a way to make it work. We'll put the pieces together, and it may be clunky at first, but we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle? Or Danielle, do you have more to report on?
That's all I have for the DOC.
I would like to just make one more comment in the way of an update, because I have been having conversations, as you may recall, for a few weeks about the potential using CARES Act dollars to purchase a hotel or motel to use for non-congregate shelter for COVID-positive folks, because we don't have any capacity yet to house folks that are COVID-positive, that are unhoused or that are vulnerable and need to be removed from their family settings so they don't infect others. And there is, there was an opportunity under this equity fund to make that kind of purchase. CSC did put money into that proposal to OHA to acquire a hotel motel that could be used in the near term for non-congregate shelter and then in the long term, be used for permanent supportive housing. That may get funded, it may not. We won't know for a couple of weeks at least. And meanwhile, there are other efforts going on at the state level and through the Association of Oregon Counties to secure that type of money that can be used for this dual purpose, emergency, non-congregate shelter, and for the long-term support of unhoused population. So I just wanted to let the board know that those conversations are ongoing. It's very fluid. I've been talking to Danielle and to Peggy McGuire at the Community Services Consortium and to others, and wanted to let you know that that conversation was ongoing.
Okay. I seem to remember early on, Lane County purchased a facility.
Yes, they did.
Any, and I don't think I've heard a lot about that recently. Was that, is that working as a model that we could get some information from?
I believe that that has been the model that is being used by this group. It's being, it's called the Turnkey Group. They are working on, they're calling Operation Turnkey. Greg Wolf, Association of Oregon Counties, has been in the lead, along with Andy Smith. And there are a whole cohort of state agency people and people from the governor's office and legislators that are working on providing funding capacity so that other counties can follow suit and use that model as well.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Any last comments, Danielle?
Nothing else for me. Thank you, Commissioners.
I would like to have one more comment, Danielle. And I want to just thank all of you guys at Health and everybody who was involved in the mask brigades that were out there helping people obtain masks. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll pass that along to the team that helped with that.
Is there a plan to continue any of that? Or as the need approach, as the need comes up?
Yes, as the need comes up and as we have more supply. Go ahead, Lilia, you were.
I was just gonna say that there, we did have our main event on the 22nd, but we have additional mask distribution locations. It's kind of a post-distribution distribution. And so we will be distributing all of our supplies until they're exhausted, as Danielle said. And we anticipate repeating the process as we have more supplies. Actually, Alyssa Rash has the majority of the details about the post-distribution distribution. So she could answer any questions if there was follow-up about that.
Do you have any comments for us, Alyssa?
Sure.
It'll take just a minute for her to get closer to the microphone.
So, we have four post-distribution locations. Let's see if I can remember them off the top of my head. We have the Corvallis Fire Station 1. We have Palomar Fire and Rescue, the Alsey Community Health Clinic, and the Monroe City Hall. So those are, those locations now have supplies at them that community members can pick up on a walk-up basis during business hours. And as Lilia said, that's until supplies are exhausted. And then as we get more supplies from the state, depending on numbers and need, we will reevaluate whether we do a large distribution event again or we continue doing these small, isolated events at locations for people to pick up.
Great. And I appreciate you folks getting to all parts of the county. And I know I had an email after the main distribution from Alsey, and what about us? So on the map, we're not a really big county, but we are spread out, so.
Yes. It has been a significant priority for everyone involved that we're able to get these face coverings out to every part of the county, which is why we had so many distribution locations, as well as selected our post-distribution sites in a way that most people throughout the county would be able to access one fairly easily.
Well, great. It's a good effort. And I assume if we get resupplied, it'll be a lot easier the second time.
Yeah, I think so. We have kind of a good protocol now to go with.
Well, and the timing is nice, before school and kind of get supplies out there before people are
Commissioner, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I wanted to note Sarah Hartstein and the work of her team. They worked really on, in advance of the mask distribution event, to reach out to targeted organizations and individuals. And I saw her mic coming on and off, so I thought maybe she had something she wanted to share. My apologies for interrupting.
Sarah?
No, thank you, Lilia. Commissioner Malone, prior to the scheduled events, Public Health did work really hard to distribute 35,000 masks to our community-based organizations serving hard-to-reach populations. And so we really focused on rural areas, organizations, serving families living in poverty, people of color, and non-English-speaking community members. And so we did hit the rural areas really hard. That information didn't necessarily spread to the general community prior to the events. And we continue to get requests coming through from our community-based organization. And as Lilia and Alyssa mentioned, we'll continue to fulfill those requests until we exhaust our resources.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. That's a great project. And it shows that we're active in trying to, trying to reach as large an audience as we can. So anything else on the DOC report?
I just want to say thank you to them, too. That's important to try to interrupt this bug or this virus as quickly as possible.
Okay. If there's nothing else for our DOC folks, we will skip to New Business 8.5.
Oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry. I did have an update for the Commissioners. For the Joint Information Center. Thank you. I will be brief. I see I have one minute, so I will talk quickly. So really, what I wanted to highlight today was some work that we have been really excited to launch for probably close to a month. So last week, we focused on onboarding our new Joint Information Center Team A. I'm really excited to say that that's going very well. So this week, what we are focusing on is launching our new data dashboards. Our community members have been requesting longitudinal information about COVID-19 in Benton County, really for quite some time. But I would say, over the course of the summer, that request for real information has grown. And so the Joint Information Center has worked very closely with Peter Van Wirth, our Epi data scientist, that I'm sure you all are familiar with, to produce several, actually, data dashboards. This is the one, the first of four that we anticipate launching. And we started with testing information because it's the most requested information from our community. So I had shared this with Joe, and he thought that it would be great to show the board prior to us launching this on our website. So we plan on launching a new revised dashboard on our COVID-19 website by the end of the week, actually. week, actually, and so I just wanted to preview that today, this morning, for you, and I invited Peter to join us as well, in case you had some specific questions about the data that he could answer. I think from the Joint Information Center's perspective, it's most important for us to continue to remind people that COVID-19 is really a serious virus, and that we need to take prevention measures seriously. I think that when you see some of this long-term data over time and see that, you know, we've had over 12,000 negative tests, it may imply that we might not need to take precaution measures thus seriously. And so we're working to develop messaging that will provide this data in context and continue to stress the importance of being vigilant about hand-washing, face covering, physical distance, et cetera. Peter, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Just that I'm always available for questions by email from the commissioners and other people on this call and otherwise, if you have any questions, comments, ideas, suggestions, et cetera.
Thank you, Peter.
And my question, this is, this would go on the website as kind of a weekly, maybe, update for people, or not?
I am unsure, actually, is the frequency that Peter intends on keeping this data updated, but what it would do is it would live permanently on our website. So the data behind the dashboard would get refreshed on a frequency that would be more frequent than we would be updating our actual website.
Sure, sure, that's what I was thinking about, the frequency of updates of this particular piece.
To this point, I've been updating weekly. The reason for that is I could update, for example, this testing data daily, but another or two of the other four pages rely on data we get from the state on a weekly basis.
Right.
And so for efficiency, I've been doing it weekly, but again, I'm certainly happy to adjust that schedule if there is requests for more frequent updates.
No, I'm fine with what you're doing, Peter, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that there will be updates at a point in time, and it's just trying to keep up with the, with it is the bigger issue. But I understand that, that was just my question, is these graphs will change somewhat over time?
Yes.
Hopefully downward.
Yes.
The data are very interesting, I really appreciate the effort to put this kind of data out to the public. Everyone has been wanting to see what the longitudinal picture looks like. I am also grateful to see the average number of days to get a test result shared, that's another common question and common concern. And frankly, the only thing that surprises me is that those averages for July and August still are under a four-day turnaround, they're not what we'd like to see, you know, a one-day, two-day turnaround, but I thought that they, those averages would look much worse. I also, you know, not very happy to see that 16% proportion of positive tests at the end of August.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Lilia or Peter Van Werth? Well, thank you, this is great information, and having some charts to rely on instead of going from memory, because the trends are really important to see, is, are our efforts resulting in better performance or not? And so it gives us a better map to go on, so, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, we're back to work session, 5.2, update on CDBG COVID-19 micro enterprise projects, and Rebecca Taylor, I think, is going to present on that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Malone, and thank you all for the time, sorry.
One more, let's see, that's what happens when you write in pencil, very small. We've got, we just did. We have a discussion of micro shelter project. Danielle and Sarah are going to lead this conversation. So give us just a few minutes, Rebecca, we have Danielle and Sarah Hartstein talking about the micro shelter project that we've added to our agenda, and for being efficient, you're already here, so if you would handle 8.5 discussion of the micro shelter project, and we do have a handout on that. So Danielle, do you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, thanks, thanks again, commissioners. So as I alluded to earlier when I was giving our DOC update, we've been working with the city and Unity Shelter around how to manage the limited capacity at the men's cold weather, what will be the men's cold weather shelter this fall. As you can probably imagine, with the COVID response, there will be limited capacity for the men's cold weather shelter, bringing their capacity down significantly lower than they've had in previous years. So as part of that planning, we've had some discussions around the use of micro shelters to help manage, support that population of individuals that have been historically accessing the cold weather shelter, and how to manage that need within the county. One of the discussions that has come up was around the use of micro shelters to allow for additional sheltering opportunities within the city and the county. So we had a proposal, Sarah, I'll let you talk a little bit about the details, but we had a proposal come through about six weeks ago. The included cost analysis of 15 micro shelters to be placed throughout the city to help support those, those houses individuals who are needing, who historically would have accessed the men's cold weather shelter, but because of capacity won't be able to. Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about the logistics of that?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So, as Danielle mentioned, the proposal that we're looking at is placing 15 micro shelters at different locations throughout the city of Corvallis to increase that cold weather shelter capacity. In order for something like that to be successful, there's a need for management, case management, an onsite presence, and Unity Shelter has put together a budget that includes the construction of those 15 shelters that the city of Corvallis is considering funding, and we've been looking at the portion that would support the case management, the onsite presence, and then the onsite operations of those different locations. And as you know, you know, it's so important to make sure that there is appropriate staffing for these types of efforts, so that we can make sure that it's successful.
So the proposal that you all have in front of you, that I think was shared with you either late last night or this morning, is for a total of $414,500. As I understand, the city of Corvallis is willing to, or is looking at potentially supporting the construction of the micro shelters, the physical construction, which would be about 200, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 222,000?
266,000.
Yeah, $222,000 to build the micro shelter structures, which includes the interior and the cost of labor to build the individual, the individual shelters. What we are looking at in this request today is potentially asking for the county to support the remaining costs of the onsite operations and the staffing costs to support those, to support those micro shelters and work towards the success of those as potential and viable options. It looks like what that total is, is about 192, somewhere between 192 and 200,000 dollars. These are funds that potentially could be CARES reversible funds, as they are related directly to the COVID response and the need for alternative options because of COVID. So the spreadsheet that you have in front of you shows a couple of different cost breakdowns. The part that we are being asked to look at is potential cost, is the site operations and the personnel costs to support and manage, as Sarah indicated, the staffing around, supporting the individuals that are in the micro shelters, and including the case management and social service need for those individuals.
I have a couple of questions, if you all are finished with the basic presentation. One is, will the existing site of the cold weather shelter continue to operate as a hygiene center, or will it also be housing men during the cold weather season?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay. The plan is for that site to physically house individuals indoors at a reduced capacity. The setup has yet to be finalized, but there's been discussions of it holding up to 20, 20 individuals, and the capacity previously was 45 to 50. And so it's really important to look for alternatives.
Thank you. And the other question is, I'm assuming that those micro shelters will persist on church sites or other sites after the COVID emergency, and may continue to be used in some capacity to shelter the unhoused, but, and so this division of costs now seems like a pragmatic approach, but moving forward, if we look at sharing costs to serve this population, and the construction's already done, does that mean that the county will bear the annual cost of all of the site operations and personnel, and the city won't be contributing?
That's a fair question, Commissioner, that I'm not sure I have the answer to. I don't know that we've even begun to have conversations with how those costs will be separated post-COVID, and once this first initial push is done.
Okay, I am supportive overall of the concept, but I am also wary about that particular division of costs because of the fact that construction ends and the other costs don't.
Commissioners, I did have a conversation with Mark Shepherd on this topic on Friday, briefly. We did not discuss the concern that you brought up, Commissioner. It's a valid concern, and I think it definitely needs to be addressed.
Absolutely.
As part of this conversation, because the ongoing costs are substantial, and what the request was from the city was for the, this annual, the first year, I should say, contribution, and, but I do think we need to dive into that in more depth. Also, Danielle, when you referenced the construction costs, I may have misheard you, but on my sheet, it shows 266,000 for construction, and I think you said 228,000, or somewhere along that line?
Yes, so Sarah, you can help, as I understand, the city is looking at contributing 222,000. The 266 includes the construction, interior, site construction of the kitchen, and the electrical costs, and the delivery. What I understand is they aren't wanting to foot that entire bill, and I'm not sure how or where they're splitting it, but Sarah, I think the number that we heard from Pabolata was 222.
Yeah, I remember hearing that as well, but it'll be important to confirm.
Yes.
The sheet does say something different, so we'll have to get the details from, from the city.
And the cost to the county on this sheet, it would, for that, those annual numbers would be 148,500, but Danielle, you mentioned something closer to 192,000, so our numbers aren't jiving at this point.
Yes, and my math was based on the 222 that the city is, the number that I keep hearing from the city minus the total of the first-year cost.
Got it, okay. Are there other partners that would come to the table, or I'm assuming that there are other service providers, obviously, like Unity Shelter, that would be contributing as well at some level?
What I'm understanding, and in all fairness, we haven't vetted this conversation entirely with the community-based organizations, what I'm understanding, though, is the cost for the personnel are expenses that none of the other community-based organizations have the capacity to support. So that's what the ask was initially for.
Thank you.
So the dollar amounts for the county, whether it's 148,500 or 192, would be in the, come out of the current year's budget, is that the intent?
Commissioner, I have Mary Ottley on the line, and she can help address that question.
Okay. Mary, could we get a little clarity from the finance point of view?
Yes, yes, the funds would come from the CARES Act, we have to spend them before December 30th, though, so I don't know what happens after December 30th. That's right now where the funding ends. So I don't know, January's still going to be cold, so we're going to have to figure out how to deal with that.
Well, I'm wondering, I believe that, well, that date was put in in the CARES Act, which was passed towards the end of March, and a lot is, a lot, I think we're a lot smarter now about our needs, and I would hope that that deadline might get extended, but that's, that's another unknown, but.
The logic would be that they'd extend it, because it is going to go past December, but right now it's written that the funding ends on December 30th, not the 31st, the 30th, so no New Year's parties either. I don't.
Okay.
Commissioners, the specific request from the city manager was for $200,000, that was the specific request that was provided to me. I did talk to the city manager a little bit more in detail regarding their process, they do plan on having this discussion with city council on September 8th. The reason that I want to point that out is it's the city manager's intent to put this in front of city council so that they will adopt, or make a motion and approve that to support their funding for the construction, and he was asking for some type of feedback from the county prior to that, if possible. That's why we interjected this discussion into the meeting today. I would like to point out that we do have a goal-setting meeting next Tuesday, we could go off and get more clarity on some of these questions, and bring it back to the board during goal-setting, if you were so inclined, which would still be, I believe, prior to the city council meeting.
Yeah.
I would be more comfortable with that answering, getting further answers to some of these questions, and thinking about the longer-term implications in advance of making a decision today. I do have one other question, and that is, in the past few years, the city and the county have each contributed $60,000 to the operations of the men's cold weather shelter. Is this over and above that sum, and would we still be expecting to put forth $60,000 to support the operations of the existing facility as a cold weather shelter?
facility as a cold weather shelter?
I believe the answer to that is yes, we would still be expected to contribute $60,000 to support the cold men's weather shelter. I would ask Sarah or Danielle to weigh in on that, but once again, we haven't discussed that in detail. But based on the context of our discussion, that is my assumption.
I would agree, that's my assumption as well, that this is in addition to, not instead of.
Thank you.
Danielle, because of the reduced capacity at the cold weather shelter, is it possible that the costs would be reduced for running that operation?
I would be surprised if the cost is lower for running that. The staffing for that is minimal. The cost is more the overhead expense, that whether there's one person or 50 people in the cold weather shelter, that's going to be a static, a relatively static cost.
Okay, thank you. I guess what I'm getting is trying to firm up the numbers, and I would be comfortable coming back next Tuesday at our goal-setting, because we've got two line items that are, have different, fairly significantly different dollar amounts attached to them. And if we can get those firmed up, I would think the sense of the board is to move forward with this project. But if we could get it on the goal-setting agenda next Tuesday for firming up the numbers and answering the really good question about what happens the following year, and especially as far as splitting costs, we've got the example of the cold weather shelter at a 50-50 split, and I think that's been appropriate and has worked fairly well as far as the funding side of things. And so with this new project, kind of getting some of the questions answered, if this goes beyond December 30th, which it will, and next June 30th, if this is still in operation, what are the responsibilities for the city and the county? So any other questions or comments?
I would like to pose.
Go ahead.
A kind of a sensitive question, and that is about the dynamics that have been reported by some of the service providers of an increase in numbers of people coming into our unhoused community from Lynn County in particular. Have you, Sarah and Danielle, been working with your counterparts in Lynn County to learn any more about that dynamic? It's difficult to address these kinds of issues because county lines are just a jurisdictional line, and they don't really reflect how people live.
Danielle, did you want to just respond to that? Otherwise, I have some.
Go ahead, Sarah. Yeah, go ahead.
On my level, I haven't been working with our counterparts in other counties. We have heard from our social service providers in other counties that are seeing camps be posted, vehicles be posted, and so folks are just trying to figure out where they can stay safely. And so if we ask our outreach staff, they are seeing an increase of folks coming from neighboring county because of a lack of place to camp or park their vehicle. What I'd also like to add is because of this increased need from folks coming from neighboring county and because we're just seeing an increased need in our own county from folks who are getting hit by the economic challenges, our outreach staff, our case management staff is feeling really overwhelmed and getting pretty fatigued. And so my comment was connected back to the personnel support for the micro shelters, that that's needed anyway, regardless of if the micro shelters are placed in those multiple sites. And I'll hand it over to Danielle.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think some of this, as we're working with the city to address the support of the homeless population, I think some of this will resolve as we move some of the city plans forward, which we have not yet seen. We're waiting for those to get finalized through the city, through Corvallis Police Department and the city. So once those plans for posting camps and cars likely moves forward, well, some of that will shift. The other piece that I'm hearing, that Sarah and I are hearing a lot about, is the Lynn County shelter that was looking at potentially closing and the oversight management for that programming in order to assist with keeping that open. I'm sure, Commissioners, you guys are aware, Sean Collins has been asked to support that. And it sounds like that's a really active, an active group that is working on supporting signs of victory to remain open in Lynn County, which I think will assist with some of that.
I hope so. Thank you.
Hannah Mill, did you have a question?
I had a question that has to do with some of our outlying communities. I don't know if we're collecting data of individuals that may be landing on the doorsteps of Monroe and Alsey and other rural communities. Most of these data seem to be specific to Corvallis.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I'm sure Philoma's keeping track, probably, I don't know, but it would be really helpful to know what the impact is out in rural county.
The HOPE Advisory Board has been doing a lot of work trying to gather that information, and it's difficult to gather because there's no one point of service. But there is quite a bit of need in Philoma, for sure. And I'm sure Sarah can address that more effectively, but I would just wanted to say that the HOPE Board is very actively focused on that.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I can address it better, but I can address it anecdotally from our social service providers in rural areas, and folks are doubled up, couch surfing, et cetera.
I guess my last question has to do with the migrant worker community. How is that faring? Did you get my question?
Yeah, so, thank you, Commissioner. Our Department Operations Center has a branch that is working closely with the migrant population. Rosio Munoz has taken the lead on that, and has just done a tremendous job with outreach and supporting that population. In terms of homeless and houseless, I think Sarah was alluding to doubled up and couch surfing. I think you're seeing that a lot in the rural communities, families living with families, you know, families living in small houses. So Rosio is actively working with that population in addition to the rest of the Health Navigation team.
So we do have somebody out there at least, you know, asking questions and seeing what can be done.
Yeah, Rosio has done a tremendous job of inserting herself into those conversations and making sure that that population that is often overlooked is not being overlooked and is being adequately addressed to the best of our abilities. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I'll just add that Kelly Volkman has two Health Navigators as well. It's a team that they're doing active outreach on the farms, both to farmers and the migrant workers. And they've done a couple of testing events. They're doing a really good job. Rosio's also brought on two interns. One is bilingual English-Spanish, one is trilingual English-Spanish mom. And it has been a really good way to get in to that community that is both here within our community, but also in the migrant worker community as well, and working very tightly with the JEC to get the appropriate messaging out in addition to the on-the-ground outreach.
We also have Matt Gillespie, who is working on the food insecurity throughout the county that's not at all focused within the Corvallis area. He's coordinated some additional food box locations and deliveries to the more rural areas that aren't within the Corvallis area. So yeah, Matt's done a great job with the food insecurity work as well.
Good.
Great. I've got a follow-up for Mary. On the CARES Act, the county has a pot of money, and with the current CARES Act stipulations, we are required to spend that by December 30th, or it goes away? Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Kind of a two-part, yes, we need to ask reimbursement by December 30th. However, because of the way we've been paying for our personnel costs not assigned to the EOC, or actually even the ones assigned to the EOC, that the departments are bearing the cost, and so we are getting reimbursed for that. We're still waiting for the audit to make sure those funds are available to us, otherwise we will have to spend some funds fairly quickly to get all our reimbursement back. But at the point we get that money back, we've already spent the CARES funds, so it is available for reallocation, which could, you know, I know right now there's a lot of eyes watching that money, so as soon as we know what we can do with it, and if we, it is available for operations or for other needs as well, so we can basically use it a second time.
I have a follow-up question there, and that is, I know that the Benton Community Foundation is working with a variety of other groups here in the county to also augment the funding for these needs our communities facing. They're looking particularly at food security and at childcare issues and at housing. And so I think that we should probably be continuing to talk to the Community Foundation about their proposals. They would like to do, continue the small contributions they've been making to support food security all around the county, but they'd like to maybe do some bigger projects related to housing and childcare. And I think that with our county CARES dollars, we could probably find another good synergistic partnership and leverage those dollars further, so just something to keep in mind. Those conversations are ongoing right now, and in the next two or three weeks, those funding ideas should be clearer at the foundation, on the foundation side.
Any other questions or comments? So the plan is to revisit this sub-topic at our September 8th goal-setting meeting?
That's correct, Commissioner. I do have a placeholder on our meeting next week for this topic. I'll work with Danielle and her staff, as well as Mark Shepherd, to get more details for the board, more clarity, so that you have all the information you need to make a decision next week.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you for your efforts, and we will talk to you next Tuesday, if not before. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, 5.2, update on CBG COVID-19 microenterprises' projects. Rebecca Taylor, and I also, I think I saw, maybe not. So take it away, Rebecca. And Greg, I thought I saw you there. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Last time staff approached the board on this topic, we were seeking the application of this particular grant, and since that time, we've been awarded the grant. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity to come back and update you on the process of staff and making sure that we meet the requirements of that grant program. I also want to discuss a little bit of ongoing efforts of the county as far as the CBG program in general moving forward. I had the opportunity to meet with, well, Greg and I had the opportunity to meet with staff from the Health Department, Finance, and Public Works to discuss the current grant application process and then also ongoing county efforts in the CBG program. In reviewing some of the grant requirements for this particular grant that we've been awarded, staff identified that there were some pretty large projects, subprojects within meeting those grant requirements that needed to be fulfilled that would require significant staff time. Something to consider about those particular tasks, though, is that once they've been completed, they do set a nice foundation and would make it so the county is more ready to make application in the future if they so desired. The two projects we're currently working on to fulfill the grant requirement is the 504 checklist, which is an assessment of county facilities' compliance with ADA requirements. This review process doesn't require that we demonstrate that we are currently in compliance, rather it's to present an evaluation to the state. The reason for this requirement is, and the other one that I'll bring up, is that CBG funding is coming from the feds, and it goes through the state, is a pass-through to us. And so the federal government has specific requirements that local jurisdictions need to demonstrate compliance to, specifically around equity and accessibility. We did fulfill these requirements in the past when we made applications for grant funding. However, some of that documentation needs to be updated for this current requirement and would be valid for a significant time following this grant application. I'm working with Gary Stockhoff and Paul Wallsinger, along with Jen Brown and Matt Gillespie, to fulfill the 504 checklist. And also, Sarah Harside is actually leading the charge to complete another requirement, which is the Limited English Proficiency Plan, which works on making sure that services on a broad county perspective are accessible to people. So she's initiated that process at the Health Department to fulfill that requirement. And so our goal is to get these tasks complete so that we can get a first draw for the grant so that it will be available to the community for those sub-grantees, which is the microenterprise businesses that meet the requirements or qualifications as defined by the grant program. So I guess I'd leave it open for questions about the current grant application at this time.
One question. We had to meet that Limited English Proficiency Planning requirement also for some of our federal transportation dollars for special transportation. But they're, they only, they limited their scope of analysis only to transportation? And, okay, so we can't really use that as a jumping off point?
Yeah, so when I was first researching this particular requirement, I did see that in the county, we did have a document that it seemed to relate to it, and I, having checked with the state, it was, like you said, it was a very specific focus of that assessment. And from my discussions with the Health Department, they've brought to my attention that, you know, it's been their interest over a period of time to formalize a Limited English Proficiency Plan. I believe there's a policy in place at this point. So while these are additional staff tasks that need to be completed for this grant, we're finding that these are serving dual purposes and that they're fulfilling some interests that the county's had over a period of time. Even with the ADA checklist that we're conducting right now, it's identifying some gaps in just the organization of that topic. And so in some of my discussions with Matt Gillespie, too, it's starting to initiate conversations that are leading to other conversations, of course, but definitely requires staff time. So we're trying to keep a focus on making sure we can complete the requirements that the grant requires at this time in a timely manner, but then not necessarily stop the conversation once we've met those requirements just for this application.
That makes sense. They basically are core planks of any kind of an equity strategy for the county, and so they are logical work topics, as you say, moving forward. But it does make this grant a little stickier in terms of getting the money out the door, doesn't it? So does this money have to be also obligated by December 30th because of the fact that these are CBG CARES Act dollars, so there's some time sensitivity as well? these are CDBG CARES Act dollars, so there's some time sensitivity as well?
So, I don't believe that there's a same-time sensitivity. I do have a meeting with the state on Thursday to clarify some of the operational parts of the grant. This is kind of a new program for them as well, and so I'm getting weekly updates on this process. I do know that as far as...I know one particular requirement, and I'm reading it off the application here, is all activities must be completed, and the project completion report submitted within 12 months from the contract execution with the department. So we actually haven't even received the contract yet from the state, and that was another thing that I'm going to be clarifying with the state on Thursday, is that they have not sent out the Benton County contract yet. And so, once that's been sent out, I will establish a very specific deadline as far as when we need to disperse the money and complete that final report.
And we're still planning on working with Dev Northwest, or their funding, lending works to do that? Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Rebecca?
Well, I have a comment. I'm really pleased with the collaboration that all our county employees are doing on this whole serious effort. So, thank you all for your work.
Yeah, so I did want to finalize one more thing, because part of our conversation that staff had last week on this topic was to identify some of the fact that this was sort of a nice reintroduction of the county to the CDBG program, and helping us understand this funding availability in the context of the COVID situation as it is now. And so, working with Finance, we're going to be...I have a meeting set up with them to figure out some of the cost benefits about administering CDBG grants, and comparison to maybe other grant opportunities that the county might have currently, and then in the future. One thing that we discussed also was, you know, as far as topical, specific grants, you know, there's ways the departments can apply for those, but if there's this overarching administration element that's necessary for grant programs, we discussed that as well. I will follow up with...let Greg kind of speak on this topic a little bit more, as representing the group on this topic.
So, Commissioners, we spoke about this briefly at my last quarterly meeting with you folks, just about the potential future of CDBG, and is the county going to get back into that on an ongoing basis? We discussed that in this staff-level meeting, and had productive conversation about it. And there are definitely costs, as well as benefits, to taking on ongoing administration of CDBG. And so that's something that we should continue to assess and evaluate. If the county were to establish a more centralized grants, not just writing, but administration function for grants, you know, whether that's in county finance, or county administration, or somewhere else, that could certainly streamline some aspects of it. If the county were to go forward with CDBG alone, I mean, as a standalone program, you know, it could be housed in one of the departments, as opposed to centrally located, potentially in health, potentially in community development. But the administration costs are fairly onerous, and so that's something we need to evaluate, whether it's worthwhile. In the past, when we had an ongoing CDBG program, the external coordinator, Community Services Consortium, took care of that administration, and that was...that simplified it for the county. So that's a potential option, but it's...there's a cost that goes along with that as well. So, we didn't come to any specific recommendation, other than there is a potential path forward, and that it will just require further conversations and evaluation of what the county's priorities are, and what our resources are to support that.
Commissioners, I will tell you in response to Greg's comments, that as we're looking at our financial services restructuring that you're aware of, and we're undergoing that process right now in terms of evaluating what we will be doing in the future and how we will be doing it, grants will be part of that conversation, because it is a gap in our organization.
Thank you. With respect to CDBG dollars in general, I...given the work that I've been doing with the HOPE Advisory Board and focusing on housing issues, it's difficult for me to say that we want to just set that aside and not partake, because that adds a significant set of funding that we can use to leverage other private dollars in order to develop affordable housing in the community, and to support those that are housing insecure. So, I recognize that there are some constraints, and that we would have to expend our dollars outside of city limits. So, we...I think a cost-benefit analysis that takes into account some of those specific housing needs, and whether having the access to those CDBG dollars outside of Corvallis would really be additive to the mix. So, please pull in some of those housing folks if you need to do that kind of a cost-benefit analysis. There might be some local developers who'd be willing to think through that with us as well. So, I'd rather not make the decision purely on the basis of the cost of administering the funds, because there are larger societal benefits to be gained from this work as well. That said, the other piece is that I think there are other federal dollars that we are not applying for because of these kinds of requirements, and if we do have that centralized capacity within the county, there are potentially other funds that we could leverage as well.
Agreed. And am I correct that the City of Corvallis is active with the CDBG process? And I assume you're in contact with those folks, and for guidance on how to get through the process, and so there is room for collaboration there?
Yes. Actually, when we were applying for this application, it was while I was serving at the EOC, and it was...we were utilizing Kent Weiss from the city prior to his retirement to prepare our application for the grant. In addition, there is a distinction between how CDBG fundings are allocated to the City of Corvallis and the county. However, with this particular program, what the city did is they actually committed some of their CDBG funding to match what our reward was, so that there could be an identical program within the city limits of Corvallis for this microenterprise program, so there wouldn't be that jurisdictional boundary for businesses if they were inside or outside the City of Corvallis. So there is definitely a collaboration that was achieved in this process, and very likely with some of the other conversations we had at this meeting, there very likely could be more of those.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for your efforts, and we will stay tuned and see how this process plays out. But I think Commissioner Ojero's comments about leveraging these dollars really make sense, and hopefully, in our financial restructuring, we can add some capacity. But keep us posted.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I would like to reiterate what Commissioner Harmio said, is that it has been a collaborative project on this, and it is really impressive for me to be able to work in this group project. It's been really awesome, so...those are my closing words.
It's good when you're working as brothers and sisters.
Next up...
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next up, 5.3, Salary Schedule Recommendations for Non-Represented Employees. We have Tracy Martino, Tammy Webb. Take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am going to turn this over to Tammy Webb to compile the information, and we'll give you a short explanation of why we're at where we're at today.
Great.
Thank you, Tracy. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I am here to discuss Personnel Policy 22.2, which is the periodic review of the compensation plan. At least annually, the Human Resource Manager will determine and recommend to the Board of Commissioners a percentage of...I'm sorry, a change in percentage to the pay scale. And this is necessary to maintain pay equity comparable to the area's economic conditions. The Employment Cost Index, for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th of 2020, was 2.7. And this index category uses all civilian, which includes state, local, nonprofit, and private sector. So the county has an interest in maintaining this connection to the labor market, which supports our ability to attract and retain well-qualified employees. And our local unemployment rate is 8.3 as of July, which is currently lower than the state, which is 10.4, and the national, which is 10.2. And so, the CFO, and...which is Mary, so Mary Ottley and Tracy Martino, the CFO and Human Resource Director, both recommend approval of the 2.7 ECI adjustment to the non-rep salary schedule ranges for the fiscal year of 2020 to 2021, to be effective July 1st of 2020. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
That makes sense to me.
Okay. I don't see any questions. I think Mary Ottley is still with us. Do you have any comments on this, Mary?
No. I agree with Tammy's recommendation.
I see that with respect to this particular item, the suggested motion is to move this to the September 15th Board of Commissioner meeting for consideration and adoption. Do we need that two-week time period, or could we just make that decision today?
I'm wondering about that, yeah.
I think it makes sense. Didn't seem like there were any questions, or dissonant information, so I think I'm ready for a motion to approve.
I would move to approve a 2.7% adjustment to the non-rep employee salary schedule ranges effective July 1st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
One less agenda item in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 5.4, update on county transit branding. Looks like Lilia Neville will be leading that discussion.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Or wait, no, it's still morning. Boy, that's been a long two and a half hours. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. So I have both Alyssa in the room with you all, Gary on screen, and Brad Dillingham with the City of Corvallis with me, really for the transit component of this morning's conversation, which is going to be a little bit abbreviated...or no, I'm sorry, not abbreviated, which is going to be kind of a smaller chunk of what I have to show you this morning. So let me go ahead and get my screen shared with you all, so you can see what we're looking at. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner, sorry, I'm having multiple monitor mouse issues. Okay. I think...yeah, I think that worked great. So, I am really, really thrilled about where we are at with the county brand. We discussed, I think, early on in the summer, a potential launch strategy, a revised launch strategy, I'm sorry. So, as you all probably recall, we were going to launch May 15th in alignment with our Benton Breakfast, and provide some neat kind of internal swag for Benton County employees. And then we were going to launch to the external public on June 1st. And what that external launch was going to look like was changing the logo on our primary digital presences, as well as making templates and files available for departments to use. So, as they're ordering materials, they would be able to start replacing some of those 3D pieces, whereas our actual rollout between myself, Alyssa, and others on within the board staff would focus on our digital presence. So this logo is something that you are really familiar with. What I'm thumbing through today is our actual new brand book. And so this is going to be the overall piece that we end up producing to help folks, either within our organization, outside of our organization, understand what the new Benton County visual identity is all about. So I just wanted to stop on this page in the PDF right away, and highlight the new treatment of the "At Your Service Every Day" tagline. That was a piece that we did not want to change when we went through this branding exercise. And so I'm really pleased with how that new tagline...no, I'm sorry, new visual look for that tagline really kind of emphasizes the everyday component, whereas I don't think that we had that with the original tagline. And I just wanted to highlight it here, because I believe the only other place in the presentation where it's going to be shown is in the formal stationery. Excuse me. So, as you all are aware, this is our primary Benton County Oregon logo. I am thrilled, really, with the way that it turned out, the engagement process that we went through with you all, the Commissioners, as well as the community. And so, moving forward from this logo, after the final decision that you all had made this last winter, we had some remaining elements that we needed to finish up. And so the primary remaining elements were our color palette, our fonts, and our department marks. So, I want to focus next on our new color palette. Alyssa and I are both very happy with how this color palette turned out. Our primary color palette is here at top left, and you can see that these are the colors that are in our primary icon within our logo. So that's our primary Benton blue. We also are going to now have a walnut blue. We have opportunity yellow, white, of course, sustainable green, and earthy brown. So, we really...initially, we very much liked these colors, but they set a certain tone, and they have a certain weight to them, which is, you know, kind of why we're happy with them, and they ended up in our primary logo. But in order to have a brand that is flexible, and that can last beyond time, season, program, activity, et cetera, we need a little bit broader of a palette to be able to offer our internal folks. So our secondary palette incorporates a bit of a brighter, softer, lighter feel. Alyssa, I think, uses the phrase that it creates a four-season palette, which I just love that she says that. And it is, again, really a flexibility from winter to spring, to be able to have attractive colors, the classics that kind of thing. And then, of course...oops, sorry, scrolled down a little bit too far. And then, of course, at the bottom, you'll see that we have four grays. I believe, if you all don't remember what the black and white looks like, let me pull that up, just as a quick reminder for you. Here we go. So over here at bottom right, you can see what a one-color application would look like. That's just a black and white. So for example, our Benton County Voters pamphlet is... So for example, our Benton County Voters pamphlet is printed on newsprint, and it's just black and white. And so that's what it would look like on black and white. So within our color palette, you know, if you talk to a graphic designer, it's pretty amazing how many grays there are. There are a ton of grays that you can select. So we have specifically defined our grays, and these grays match our one-color logo, so that we can ensure when we're doing monochromatic design, it's not, I'm sorry, grayscale design, it's not that everything looks really, really dark or really, really heavy. We do have a nice broad range of grays. So we're really, really thrilled with the colors and how that turned out. The next piece that I want to highlight for you all, I'll just stop here briefly to show this application of formal stationery and business card. Top left is the business card. Oops, sorry, my scrolling apparently is not at top performance today. Okay, so top left is our, the revised business card. It again has that tagline on the back, which I think is a really nice piece. And then the formal stationery. When I was discussing with department directors, there was a fair amount of questions about what the difference between formal stationery and electronic letterhead is. Formal stationery is paper that you already have in the office that has these logos printed on it already, and then you're going to add on to it. That's typically what you would think of, like putting into a typewriter. Electronic letterhead is what we use almost 98% of the time these days, such as Microsoft Word Letterhead. And that does look a little bit different. I'll show you an example of that. So this is the formal stationery. You all have seen this before. Let me get down into the department marks. So the remaining elements besides color were our departments. And so this is an example of how a department mark would be paired with our Benton County logo. The next page is actually all of our department marks. So I think it was last week I took this to our department director's meeting, reviewed it with them, and what I was looking for was specific feedback on the word "department." As you can see, "department" is appended to every single department name. And the reason why I made that decision was that some of the departments seem a little bit off without a second word, like juvenile, you know, should say services, or, you know, something of that nature. And so when I showed these marks to directors, there was, it seemed a consensus that it was a good idea to include the word "department," because it was a new logo and we didn't want folks to think, oh, maybe community development, maybe that's an initiative instead of an actual department. So I thought that that was really good feedback from the directors, actually, that consideration. I hadn't thought of that consideration, so I thought that that was a really important piece. And then the next page, I believe, yeah, so this is an example, let me make sure you guys can see, you can see that pretty okay. So this is an example of what department letterhead or electronic stationery would look like. This is your Microsoft Word document. So you would be able to utilize either your department logo at top left, you could utilize the Benton County logo if you wanted at top left, and then at top right, you can have your program information, your division information, initiative, whatever the case may be. So that allows for, again, like in this example, to get down into the Environmental Health Division. The piece of feedback that directors had for this template was to include something in the footer, you know, not necessarily, let me get other thumbnail up, excuse me, not necessarily in the exact style of what we see here in the formal stationery with the tagline in the footer, but something in the electronic letterhead that places, or again, onto the letterhead, because our departments gave us feedback in that they, too, sometimes get a little bit confused with Benton Counties and other states. And so on their letterhead, they just requested that little edit. So I thought that that was fantastic feedback as well for the departmental letterhead. And so I think from there, I am going to transition to the transit part of this presentation. I'm trying to move quickly, because I know that we're a bit behind schedule this morning. So I'll pause here and pause for questions about the regular county brand. As a reminder, Alyssa and I are aiming to try and have our launch occur in October. So this would, again, would be our external launch. So that would be changing out the logo on our website, our IT platforms, and our social media presences, those sorts of digital platforms, again, with our printed and 3D products. We're working really closely with the Sustainability Program and actually the Resource Efficiency Committee to develop plans and processes, not to just throw away a lot of paper, but to order new stock with new imagery when they run out, or as they run out. So again, sorry, I want to just pause and stop for any questions about the overall county brand.
Ozanne?
I just wanted to reiterate the fact that we had discussed before that elections will not switch over to the new branding until after November, so that...
Yes. And Finance also mentioned, when I was presenting with the directors, that they, with their property tax, property tax statements, also will not have the new logo on those envelopes.
That makes sense.
Well, this is exciting. We had a lot of momentum going into March, and we're essentially complete at that point, and then COVID hit, and it's, a lot of our projects have been delayed, but it's nice that they're not forgotten. And I can't wait to go to county meetings and let them know we have a color palette. They may have color, but we have a whole palette and that, and that that gives us flexibility to get this brand where we need it. And this is just a huge improvement over our current setup, and looking forward to seeing some of these colors rolling out. So good job. I don't see any other questions, so if you wanted to soldier on, Lilia?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you for your support. Yeah, I'm really excited about the new, the new look and feel. Okay. So building on our new look and feel, our very first piece that we are going to build upon it is actually our brand-new Transit brand. So I'm not going to give a lot of the history behind this. Gary and Brad are on the call, so they certainly can speak to some of the history, but there is a business need, excuse me, from a communications perspective. We have the 99 Express, we have Costa Valley, we also have the Call for Service rides. And all of these great transit opportunities unfortunately don't have the Benton County name on them. And so we really, really want to start taking advantage of these opportunities to get the Benton County name out there. And so I do know that as part of some of this rebranding and refocusing of efforts, there are some new buses that have been waiting for branding. So Gary, is there anything on the background that you'd like to add?
Yeah, if I can, because it does, that's kind of where we're at. And, you know, a lot of this has been brought to the forefront because of the budget challenges that we recognized a little over a year ago. But it really did highlight the need that we needed to figure out what services we have, what their limits were, and you've heard this, you know, mentioned, and redefine those, to make sure that we're living within our means. And that's given us a chance to also move some things forward that I think have been on the back burner for a while, and leased and rented, and so helpful getting it started, but it really is being our own identity and being Benton County Transit. And we're going to propose a new name, obviously, kind of a hit the reset button, but have identity on our vehicles and make sure our vehicles are our vehicles and our vendors' vehicles are their vehicles. So we've already started that. We've actually, just in the last, this week, we'll move eight more vehicles over to our vendors' list. That doesn't mean that we've taken care of the insurance and titling yet, but for maintenance and all that, it will be their, those will be their vehicles. And they can brand them like they want, they can do these services outside of Benton County Transit all they want, but it won't be Benton County. And we'll be able to say to the federal Transit, Transit folks, and also ODOT, our vehicles are only being used on our programs, which is not the case that we've had before. So very clear line of demarcation in vehicles. With that said, that then gives us a chance to now come up with who we want to be and have that as our logo. As Lilia said, with the new buses, we've installed the reader boards in the front, so we can program to tell the clients whatever route it is that it's on. We don't have to have one bus boat showing that it's the 99 Express or one of the Costa Valleys, they'll all be the same kind, it standardizes things, just makes it way more efficient, and identifies Benton County as the provider of those services. So with that in mind, and I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself here, but I know that we're working on a logo to go along with that, and that should happen in the next, you know, week or so, something for you all to look at. But I think we've kind of arrived at Benton Area Transit, as what we would like to call ourselves, also known as the BAT. And I'm sure there's some graphic artists and other folks that are way more creative than this challenged engineer that can use that in a marketing program. The other part about that is we are going to have our own personal, not personal, our own phone number, which has not been the case so far. We have worked with IT and we've actually set aside 541-766-2121, which if you go to your phone pad, that's a B and an at sign, and a B and an at sign. So the BAT thing kind of seems to be working here for us. But before we look forward, obviously, we want to just make sure that we're not going off on some tangent somewhere, but it is time, and now the perfect time to make the transition, because transit, we're still bumping along about 24%, 25% of normal. So we can get these things done, we can implement it, you know, we'll baste in the modifications to the buses, but we are moving it forward, and we're going to grow up and be our own transit group. So that's my spiel.
That was a great spiel, Gary. I appreciate it. Lisa, is there anything that you'd like to add? I, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce you at the beginning of this topic. It's my, anyways, so I just wanted to mention that Lisa Shurf here, also with the City of Corvallis, is a key partner on this project. Lisa, is there anything you'd like to add?
I would only say this, and thank you, Lilia. Gary, you know, there's nothing to add, really. I would just say that Gary and Brad and I have been working really closely, I mean, daily, very tightly, to sort of address the challenges in the program, and COVID provided sort of a unique opportunity that none of us saw coming. And so we're all really excited about some of the things, the direction that we're headed. I would speak, I think I can speak for all of us and say that. So I'm very appreciative of the partnership that we have and have exhibited. And Lilia, you and Alyssa have, you know, have been fantastic on this branding part.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. Thank you. So Commissioners, what I'd like to do is give you a little bit of background from a communications perspective. So as you all know, Alyssa Rash started in May as the county's new Public Information Officer, and so Alyssa is really the lead project manager on the Transit Branding effort. I am continuing as the, a project manager on our overall county brand, because really Alyssa just got to experience it because of COVID, to be honest with you. And so really, I'm leading that piece, and Alyssa is leading Transit Brand. So, you know, I don't have all of the details like she does, but what I do have for you is really the foundation for where the Transit brand is going to go. At the beginning of the Benton County rebranding effort, you all know that we engaged in really a lot of, we feel thoughtful outreach and engagement. And so we're going to build upon that with the Transit brand. What that means is, is that the Transit brand is going to have the same feel as this current logo. So it's going to use a similar color palette. We hope to have icons that have some sort of similarity to it, so that when someone sees Benton Area Transit with an icon, whatever that icon and font type ends up being, it says Benton County. We were having a discussion, this internal group, the five or six of us, with Madison Avenue Collective, and we were talking about the proposed name of Benton Area Transit, and how not everything needs to be within a name. We can also have alignment with our visuals, through color, through the style, and type of illustration in the icon. So we had our first kickoff meeting with Madison Avenue Collective about a week ago, and we're actually going to be seeing some initial concepts later this week. We have an aggressive timeline, so you're actually going to see, you, as in the Board of Commissioners, are actually going to see concepts for this next week at goal setting, which is fast and exciting. But as Gary mentioned, what we're bringing to you today, and it is later on in the agenda, is the name Benton Area Transit. So the reason why they're split up into two items is this morning, the work session discussion, I really needed to provide an update on the county brand, as well as kind of intro this Transit branding topic. The formal approval of the Benton Area Transit name is lower down on the agenda with the new business. And so we just separated those two items for logistical reasons. So if you want to wait and ask more questions further down in the agenda, certainly, but I'd be happy to answer questions now, especially since Lisa and Gary and Brad and Alyssa are all online and can help fill in the details.
I had noticed that, Lilia, and I think it makes sense to move 8.2 into this current discussion, since you're all online and it's the same, or part of the same topic. So we've been moving our agenda items around all morning, no reason to slow down now. So is there any, any further questions or comments on 5.4, kind of the informational side of this discussion?
No, I was just going to make a wisecrack earlier about the fact that we already have the bee, now we're going to have bats, so maybe we need birds next.
Oh, Commissioner Oshiro, I am on board. That's a great idea.
Okay, can we jump to 8.2 under new business and the decision? So the decision is on the Benton Area Transit name for our transit operation.
We also don't have that item in our packet as a checklist, so just make that note.
You know, I created a single checklist, Commissioner. And after I submitted it in discussion with Teresa, once I described what I was attempting to do, she advocated, suggested that I actually split up the information from the decision point. So, yeah, my apologies for there not being two separate checklists.
That's okay. I just, the, I'm used to the crutch of having a work session motion in front of me.
So any more discussion needed on the name? I would entertain a motion?
I would move to accept Benton Area Transit as the new name for the Special and Rural Transportation Program. transportation program. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are BAT.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners. Very much appreciated.
Oh, really looking forward to having a consistent brand on our vehicles and this is really timely because we have a shiny new logo, so looking forward to that.
Mr. Chair, would this be an appropriate time to ask for a 10-minute break?
As short as we can, but that's what I was going to propose.
Five minutes at least.
We've got Steve Clark with us and...
We could do it after that.
I think maybe do 8.4 next, clarification of our emergency declaration. So when we get back at 11 o'clock, we will take that up.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the emergency declaration? Well, we are back from our break, and as I mentioned before, before the break, we will move to 8.4 under new business, clarification of our emergency declaration. Take it away.
So we, the...
So we, the...
I don't have my speaker on.
I don't have my speaker on. I don't have my speaker on.
You got...
It's me.
Yes, I think you have your mic on.
Aye.
Your speaker in the bottom right?
Did better?
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, much better.
Thank you.
See, you can tell it's been a while.
That woke everybody up.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody with us? Come on now, keep up. Last week, we, the, we being the county, had several conversations with Oregon State University. We had a participatory meeting with the city council at which the question of how to get the community involved with complying with and adhering to governor executive orders and the governor's mandates with regard to wearing facial coverings, social gatherings, indoor and outdoor, physical distancing, sanitization, et cetera, et cetera. Had a similar conversation with the city attorney and with the Benton County sheriff as those mandates relate to the question of how they would be enforced. Ultimately, what we had the conversation with OSU, I want to say it might have been last Monday, Steve, if that's roughly, Monday or Tuesday, something like that, that we all acknowledge the desire to have a consistent message coming from the city council and the Board of Commissioners about asking people and pushing them to comply with certain elements of the, all elements of the governor's mandate. When we met with the city council, same message. Conversation I had with the sheriff was it's, he's all behind the effort to advertise and educate the public, community, citizens, students about the governor's mandates, about the positive implications regarding the pandemic, that the social distancing and the limits on these social gatherings will have. But the sheriff stopped short of saying that he would enforce anything, simply because of the resource limitations, the challenges his deputies face in our current environment. Jim Brewer from the city of Corvallis also expressed the same reservations put to him from Chief Hurley about the Corvallis Police Department being, I think, what they, what they said, I think they called them the, with a tongue in cheek, they didn't want to be the face mask police. Ultimately, at the meeting with the city council, I think that the general consensus was that the policy, the mandates put forward by the governor and reinforced by Benton County and the city council would be rolled into, and you're going to have to help me with the acronym, the neighborhood, it's a three-letter acronym, neighborhood...
SRN, Special Response Notice?
Yeah, Neighborhood Special Response Notice, that they would be rolled into that notice to allow at least information to be gathered that would perhaps be sent to OSU, perhaps be sent to the health department in an effort to inform and educate the participants in these social gatherings, also to give the neighbors a vehicle that they could, they could utilize to kind of help control some gatherings that may happen, which is almost inevitable when you have college kids coming back. So with all of that said, we committed to putting forward to the board a emergency declaration, a revision to our current emergency declaration that restates the original declaration, restates the First Amendment, which was to extend the deadline...
This conference will now be recorded.
Go ahead.
Do I have to do everything else again?
No.
Extends the emergency declaration through October 31st, 2020, and then adds in the language where we strongly encourage and recommend citizens to adhere to the governor's mandates with regard to wearing facial coverings, physical distancing, hand washing, hand sanitization, and social gatherings. We specifically called out the request that the citizens and community members maintain no more, or participate in no more than outdoor gathering of 10 persons. Gets a little tricky because as you know, in Phase Two, we are sitting at, I want to say it's 100 potentially, and of course with bars and restaurants and churches, there's a wide number of possible outdoor gatherings that we, that the governor may allow. And we are specifically saying we like these, these social gatherings, these parties, these social get-togethers, to be no more than 10 people because that has really been set as sort of a threshold to minimize the potential for spread for the COVID. So that's what the proposed emergency declaration does, is it reiterates the governor's mandates and reinforces the desire that folks limit their outdoor gatherings to no more than 10 persons. And I know Zan has had her hand going, so...
And the reason I do is because the governor's executive order language really distinguishes between social gatherings and social get-togethers.
That's right.
And I think that we can say that social gatherings, which are civic or commercial or religious in nature, and have very specific mandates from the state in terms of how they are to be conducted, with the amount of space available and the types of precautions taken and everything else, are one thing, but outdoor social get-togethers, i.e. parties, are a different thing. And I think we need to really use that outdoor social get-together language rather than
Social Gathering.
Outdoor social gathering language.
I agree.
And that would make things easier to parse moving forward. So I think that there's actually a void in the governor's policy guidance there because that she addresses outdoor social gatherings but doesn't address outdoor social get-togethers, only addresses indoor social get-togethers.
Right.
So personally, I feel that we could, if we chose to, move further and limit those outdoor social get-togethers to 10 people and be stepping into space that is not defined right now, looking at that executive order from the governor. I understand the reluctance of the sheriff's office and the Corvallis Police Department and other local law enforcement to step into this arena. I don't think they, we need any active enforcement of being the mask police, for instance, et cetera, but with these outdoor social gatherings, it would be...
What?
Get-togethers. It would be great if we had the tool in the toolkit to give a warning, just like we do with a speeding driver or someone smoking indoors, and then pursue a stiffer penalty if people violate that repeatedly.
Okay, so this emergency declaration will have no force behind it. So if we say thou shalt not hold more than 10, so an outdoor gathering, get-together, an outdoor get-together of more than 10, there is no enforcement mechanism built into these. It does not carry the weight of law, and there is nothing for the sheriff's office or CPD to use to write a citation if they've got a repeat offender. So just know that short of a directive to the health... So just know that short of a, a directive to the health director, which remember, this is, falls under the authority of the local public health authority to enforce, our sheriff's office will not have a mechanism by which to cite anybody who thumbs their nose and refuses to comply.
Unless we were to change our county code, which is a longer.
Right, and then now we're talking about a process that, you know, I'm not sure it's going to get us where you need to be in time to, to be in place for the resumption of OSU activities.
Commissioners, also just another piece of information that is relevant but not directly related, and that is, as it relates to our county facilities, our natural areas and parks, the facilities that people can rent out for social gatherings, we have a policy in place currently and we plan on continuing it whereby we're not allowing any, we're not permitting any social gatherings at any of our parks facilities. So we are taking a really strict stance on that. That doesn't mean that people are not going about in doing that, but they're certainly not doing it with, under our permitting process.
And, and I guess one other aspect, you know, based on what you've said about the social, and I, I don't know why I'm struggling with this term, social get-togethers, I've got to, I've got to write that down. Social get-togethers, easy enough to change the emergency declaration in the seventh whereas, to swap out social gatherings to social get-togethers, no problem. If there is a desire to go further and mandate the limit, I would strongly encourage a conversation to include our sheriff's office and our health director about how any kind of measures to enforce might look. As the sheriff informed me, they're already taking active measures to educate community and to residents, but they are stopping well short of any kind of enforcement because right now under the governor's orders, they're, that's the same problem that I identified with regard to enforcing. There's no criminal or misdemeanor label attached to violation and additionally, I didn't appreciate this until I chatted with Sheriff Jackson, because it's not criminal misdemeanor, the district attorney doesn't prosecute those. So it's kind of a head-scratcher in how we would put forward any kind of an enforcement component. And I know I'm focusing on enforcement and I, and I don't mean to, I just want to emphasize that if you issue a mandate and you have the one or two person who wants to push back hard, health department and that sheriff's office are going to ask in that situation, what can I do? What can we do? And, and that's where I think a conversation with Charlie Fountain and Sheriff Jackson would be incredibly helpful if you're interested in going that route, to develop a game plan, so to speak.
Commissioners, as you know, Charlie Fountain is on vacation this week, that's why he's not here this morning. If the board wanted to gain additional insight from the sheriff and/or Charlie Fountain, we could certainly try and do that at next week's meeting at goal setting, if the board was so inclined. So just making sure you're aware that there's additional opportunity to discuss this if you wish.
I know that the enforcement issues are a real challenge and there is no force of law, there's no description of what kind of a violation this is, I understand that. I think my biggest concern is just that we ensure that we have a really unified message between the county, the university, and the city about social get-togethers, indoor or outdoor, and limiting them to 10 people or less because without that, we have a really high risk of super-spreading events. And I think that it's in all of our interest to avoid those so that we can keep our businesses open, so we don't have to go through the economic turmoil of another full shutdown. And so hopefully, we can get back to in-person schooling for everyone. So I just, and I know that we do have a messaging team working between Steve Clark at OSU and Lilia and Alyssa here at the county, and I'm looking forward to seeing that campaign and to having a unified voice.
Commissioners, that particular campaign will be shared with you at next week's goal setting. Steve Clark and Lilia Neville will be there to, to talk about the campaign, the communication campaign.
Well, this discussion seems a little bit familiar from two months ago and when we were talking about masks and, you know, what, what level of enforcement do we, do we want to try for? And after kind of a similar discussion to what we're having today, it was, I don't have the language right in front of me, but strongly encouraged to wear a mask and then maybe some specifics. And I think at the time, the idea was, well, what's the goal and what's the best tool to get there? And I, we don't have any charts and graphs on, that I know of, on compliance with wearing masks indoors and where social distancing isn't possible outdoors, but I think we've made good strides in compliance since June. And on this issue, we don't have as much time to, to word and, but I can't see what puts any advantage for Benton County to do something where maybe we're the only county trying to, say, put the force of law behind our, our goals. But I don't know that, but I'd be curious if any other counties have gone significantly beyond what the governor's guidance is. And by limiting outdoor gatherings or get-togethers or social or antisocial, we, we're already going beyond what, what current guidance is. So I, I would say, I think we, we do have another week to gather more information. Our meeting, our goal-setting meeting, I'm fairly sure takes place on next Tuesday before the city council meeting in the evening, so we could still let those folks know what our decision is next Tuesday.
I'd be happy to move forward with the language as it is, other than swapping out that outdoor social gatherings in paragraph seven of the Horaz's to outdoor social get-togethers and changing the fourth point in the, now their fours likewise to outdoor social get-togethers.
All right. Well, Steve Clark from OSU is with us. Do you think we, Annabelle and I were on the.
Call, yeah.
Meeting last Thursday with the Corvallis folks and we got to kind of explain things from OSU's point of view. Would you like to maybe summarize what you, what your thoughts are?
Commissioner, and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity just to share a few thoughts. A couple considerations, as I shared on Thursday night with the commissioners and the city council. The governor's executive orders and guidance that have been issued since late March, none of those, to my knowledge, have been brought to bear with enforcement as a requirement, but certainly there is an option. That is the same as, as I think Commissioner Ogera referred to in terms of smoking. And there are other examples of laws of the land, laws of the state, laws of the county that have the opportunity to be observed as a form of public accountability and community consensus that by the uniform agreement of elected officials, city and county, and the public's engagement, do not require the threat of enforcement for the public to respond and participate. That has been the case in Oregon largely. Not everyone observes whether it was stay-at-home orders or face covering orders or the governor's guidelines since July 24th related to gatherings and, as we've talked about today, the distinction between social get-togethers and gatherings. What we have been able to do is recognize that we are in a, in a pandemic. We're in a national, a state, a local, and a global crisis. And for each of us, as members of Benton County, to participate in helping to address that, I think is, is essential. Now, how is it that a social, the limit on social get-togethers is going to make that difference? It'll make that difference as wearing face coverages have or physical and social distancing. It is an acknowledgement, as have other communities nationally, in the Pacific Northwest, Spokane, Washington, or excuse me, Pullman, Washington, the home of Washington State University, which has this type of measure, and collaboration with the university there. In Eugene, where the University of Oregon has established similar limits on social get-togethers as has Oregon State, and is in conversations with the city of Eugene. We have that opportunity to lead to establish levels of accountability without the threat of enforcement because if we stipulate what we know is right, as individuals, we can carry it out without having to have our hands slapped. If there was such a grievous matter of disruption, let's say, you might have seen in the news, it was either Iowa or Iowa State University, or there was like a thousand people in the street, then law enforcement has the opportunity to say, we're going to act. Or it'd be like one of us going 68 miles an hour on the freeway and a police officer sees us and they would say, you know, if you're not driving dangerously while over the speed limit, I'm not going to stop you. If you were weaving and going 68, they would. If you were going 85, they would stop you. So there is that opportunity for leadership and public accountability to occur without having the strict requirement of enforcement as the determinant. That has been the case with the governor's executive orders since late March. She has clearly said what her expectations for Oregonians are. She has clearly said she would not require a vocal or state police to enforce them. That did not change her expectation for behavior, and that's what we're asking the county and the city of Corvallis, the city of Pullman, to join us in. To join in that statement of expectation, of requirement, and, and do so in a consistent way. We've done that as a community before, we've done that around smoking, we've done that as a state and a nation around seat belts. I think we have that opportunity, if not that mandate today, because the risk of doing otherwise is to send an inconsistent message, a non-aligned message, and a soft message that would say, you know, it's, it's okay to, to sort of do this, but it's, it's, it's not okay, and which is it? It's either okay or it's not.
Yeah.
The governor is interesting because her executive orders did stipulate maximum capacities for gatherings indoor and outdoors, for Phase One and Phase Two counties. She did stipulate maximum gathering for social get-togethers indoors, but for some reason chose not to do it for outdoors. I think we could lead in Benton County, and I think the University of Oregon is asking the city of Eugene and possibly Ealing County to lead locally as well. We asked for that. Meanwhile, I agree with you that there is time, not a lot of time. Students begin arriving, many live here year-round, around September 1st, around Labor Day. So there is the opportunity for the council to act plus those special response notices, which had been in effect for about seven or eight years in Corvallis related to noise and disorderly conduct. And they provided the university an opportunity to receive the, the notices from law enforcement and then react on those through our Office of Student Conduct. We're also, as, as the commissioners may know, we've established beginning last Monday or Tuesday, a website that allows community members to actually provide reports. And we're now checking those each eight hours to determine what reports have been made. So we're, we're asking for concurrence, we're asking for definition, we're asking for alignment. In a pandemic in which lives are at stake, and I think we as leaders and members of the community can, yes, go further than the governor, but do so in a way with the mindfulness of health and our, and our outcome that we seek to achieve. We, we want to work with you as we continue to work with the county and the public health, county public health department each day, so certainly willing to work with you throughout this week and next Tuesday as well. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, Vance, or I'm not exactly clear what Steve Clark is asking for vis-à-vis what, what we've got in front of us.
I guess I thought he.
I would ask you to amend the ordinance to require, not, not to encourage. That, that would be my request.
That's what I thought.
Currently, Commissioner, we use the words urge and encourage.
Okay. Yeah, and again, I'm going to, I'm going to come back to the position that if that's a direction you want to go, I, I recommend you hold off until next Tuesday when you can bring Charlie Fountain and Sheriff Jackson into the conversation.
I agree.
And ask them what that kind of a mandate will mean for their staff, their resources, the expectations for their departments and of Benton County. That's, I, I, I would feel uncomfortable making that change without their input. Okay.
I think that would be fine. I'm comfortable with that.
So commissioners, what I hear you saying is let's bring this topic back to our goal-setting meeting next Tuesday.
And have.
We can have the sheriff, we can have Charlie Fountain there. What other items does the board need to have or information do you need at that meeting that staff can work on this week? If, if there's something out there, I need to be aware of it so we can bring it to the table for you next Tuesday.
Well, I think we're all in agreement on goals. It's a question of vehicle to get there. And is what we currently have in place more effective than stronger language that with, we'll get more detail on enforcement, but the conversations that I, I'm aware of so far is that we don't, we don't have that capacity.
One other thing just to put on your plate to consider, if you, if you talk about this at your goal-setting next Tuesday, I know that there may well be an ancillary conversation about whether to extend the emergency deadline beyond October 31st. And as I've said from the outset, you can always amend this declaration, which is why it's in front of you now, you can always end it early. So you could roll a conversation next week into an additional, if, you know, that's a direction that Charlie might want to go, extend this for a longer period of time. So it'd give kind of a broader conversation about where we stand within the emergency declaration in the pandemic.
I would appreciate that, that October 31st deadline seems a little short to me.
It didn't way back in June, though.
Actually, and we are waiting for the governor to extend the, the current date that the state has in place, which expires within the next week or two. We've been informed that the governor will be extending that. that the governor will be extending that, we believe, for 60 days. But we were hoping that would be announced at some point this week. So we may want them to coincide. I do agree, I think October 31st, that definitely needs to be extended, and I was-
Absolutely.
I was promoting that we extended till the end of the year at this point. So, but we can wait and decide that.
October 31st is one of the biggest social get-together events of the year for OSU students, so.
All right, so the consensus is to continue this discussion next Tuesday, September 8th, at our goal-setting meeting.
Well, is it? Because that's not quite what I understand. I understand that you, there's a, you've each expressed a desire to move forward with the change from social gathering to social get-together with this current revision, and then have a renewed conversation about strengthening that directive and perhaps extending the, with a third amendment, the declaration on Tuesday.
Okay.
That's sort of why I think, I thought I heard you guys going.
Okay. So we have the option of passing what's in front of us today.
With the changes, yes.
With a couple of changes, and then revisit the topic next Tuesday.
Yep. Yeah. That's what I thought I heard you say. And again, remember, you can always say, "We want to put this off to the side and roll all changes in later."
And for me, commissioners, I don't know if Lalea is still on the line or not, but multiple communications in a short period of time with changes, I don't think that works.
No. I think we need to-
I appreciate your advocacy, Joe.
I would prefer to hold all of the changes until next Tuesday at goal-setting, if that's what we're going to do, rather than do this twice in a short period of time.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Do you intend to discuss and decide next Tuesday, or simply discuss in an advance decision to the third Tuesday of the month?
I think we-
I just mention that because I want to remind folks that next week's meeting, we typically don't livestream, because it typically is not a decision-making meeting. So we can adjust that, if that is something that you all would do, but this would be a logistical coordination on my part. So just looking for that little bit of clarification, if you all would it mind. Thank you.
I would prefer that we make the decision in a meeting when we do have the potential for public participation.
I do, too.
But, so you're saying postpone it for two weeks?
I would say that it means we discuss it next week and better understand the issue around enforcement, and then we move it to the agenda the following week.
And that's after the Corvallis City Council has their meeting?
Yes. We could definitely convey the content of our discussion about enforcement.
I think we could.
But we would not have made a formal decision.
Lalea, could you clarify how much effort would go into livestreaming at least part of our goal-setting meeting next week?
Alyssa, can you look over next to John Harris and see if he's available next Tuesday morning?
He is.
And if he nods yes, then Commissioner Malone, it is very simple for me to arrange livestreaming for next Tuesday morning.
And maybe the idea is to have this towards the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Livestream that portion, and then move on to our normal goal-setting. Okay?
For my part, that's certainly doable. Absolutely. On my end, logistically, I can make that happen. Yes.
Okay. I have some sense of urgency that we need to move along with this effort, so we can start communicating. And I would reemphasize the consistent message is critical. I mean, we're, this is a little bit uncharted territory, and so getting the word out and getting some cooperation from people in Corvallis and Benton County is, that's the main way this is going to work. And we're, I think, tinkering around the edges on how to be most effective. But, so if that's agreeable, we will put this maybe at the beginning of our next Tuesday's goal-setting meeting, livestream it, and then hopefully come to a decision at that time.
Commissioner Malone, I have a question for Lalea and Steve Clark. Lalea and Steve, next week, we have the communication campaign on the agenda at 9:30. What I'm asking is, does it make sense for us to have that communication campaign presented to the board prior to this conversation regarding the emergency declaration, or after the discussion the board has with the emergency declaration?
You know, I certainly don't want to speak for Steve. And for my part, certainly, our communications plan, we initiated, as Steve mentioned several months ago, and will continue to advance whether or not, well, no, let me say despite the decision, the forthcoming decision of the board. So I'm happy to do it before or after, as the agenda allows. Steve?
I agree. We can augment any changes as part of the communications plan after any decisions are made by the commission or the council. So, yes, I would go ahead and allow us the chance to provide you the overview, and allow you to comment and contribute to that.
Okay.
So we'll do that. We'll put the communication plan discussion first, and then this topic second, regarding the emergency declaration. And we'll have the sheriff and Charlie Fountain available.
Absolutely.
Great. Okay. Anything else on this?
I'm on, and I'll make sure I'm available next Tuesday.
Oh, you're on.
Sheriff, who would be someone that could stand in for you if you're not available?
I'll be here, and I'll have Captain Rogers with me, like the undersheriff, if there is.
So he did say he could be there?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff Jackson, and-
No problem.
And just to sum up, we're all on the same team, have the same goals, and the discussion is how to achieve those goals. So I appreciate everybody's careful consideration on this. I mean, it is a critical topic, and I think of Peter Benwith models, and we can have a lot of control over the outcome depending on how we act as a community. So, thank you. All right. I think that takes care of new business. So we'll back up to item number six, Consent Calendar. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still moved.
I would like to request that we remove the DSAC and Solid Waste Advisory Council bylaws from the consent calendar.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about item 6.1?
Item 6.1.
Okay. And the idea, so we can discuss?
I brought up an issue earlier, or yesterday, when I saw the agenda with Greg Barret and with-
Daniel.
Joe, and not Danielle, but it's about the language of, and Daniel, yes. Sorry, not Danielle, but Daniel. About the language in the bylaws that refers to the community members at large that are serving on these committees as citizens. And I am uncomfortable with that language of citizens, because it implies citizenship in the United States. And we don't typically limit participation in our advisory boards and committees to people that are U.S. citizens. There are many people in this county that are here affiliated with the university or otherwise that are not U.S. citizens.
That's correct.
And we've been systematically trying to remove that language where we see it as a matter of equity and access, but it snuck into this one, or it just remains there. So I'd like to see that changed. Daniel can speak to that. I think he's already made the changes.
Yes, I've made some updates to those drafts, and if you'd like, I can send them over, or just include them in the next section's checklist.
Yeah. I think if we were to make those, adopt those changes at the next board meeting in two weeks, that would be a good idea.
Excellent.
Thank you for your work on this.
And I just want to-
Thank you.
I just want to point out, there are two nouns that we use that are very deliberate. One is resident, and the other is elector. So-
Yeah.
Any other terms are purely at your discretion. But when we say resident, or we say elector, it's for a very specific reason. But any other word choices, completely up to you guys.
Okay.
All right. So I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar to, for item 6.2 and 6.3.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we will get back to 6.1 in two weeks, the language changes. Okay? Item number seven, Proclamations. And first up is proclaiming September 17th, 2020, as Constitution Day in Benton County. And I think I'm up on that one. Have to... All right. And I'm gonna, in service of time, I'm going to read a bridged edition of proclamation. And I'm gonna make it bigger, so I can see it. "Our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and for their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America, and signed it on September 17th, 1787. The conventions of a number of states having time, having, at the time of their adopting the constitution, expressed a desire, in order to prevent misconstruction or abuse of its powers, that further declaratory and restrictive clauses shall be added, and which subsequently became known as the Bill of Rights Amendments 1 through 10, December 15th, 1791. Citizens are urged and encouraged to reflect on the benefits of our Constitution and Bill of Rights and subsequent amendments, and the privileges and responsibility of American citizenship." So I guess we need to approve the proclamation?
I would move that we proclaim September 17th, 2020, as Constitution Day in Benton County.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. 7.2, "In the matter of proclaiming September 15th to October 15th, Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County." Commissioner R. Mill.
I'm gonna have to lower my mask, if you can hear me. "Before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of proclaiming September 15th to October 15th, Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, it's proclamation P. 2020-013." And I'm going to read the whole thing, because I think it's very important to put this in the record yearly. "During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we pause to celebrate the immeasurable contributions these individuals have made to our nation from its inception to the latest chapters. And the history of Hispanic people in the United States predates the formation of our nation, with roots in the land as indigenous people who have shaped the fabric of this country. Hispanics have overcome great obstacles to persevere and flourish in every sector of our society. With enduring values of faith and family, hard work, and sacrifice, Hispanics have persevered, have preserved the rich heritage of generations past, while contributing mightily to the promise of our nation's future. And with a national theme, be proud of your past and embrace the future, Benton County's observance celebrates this history, its cultures, and all the contributions made by Hispanic Americans who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and all they will, and they will, and all they will continue to make in the future. This month, we honor Hispanic American communities, even as we recognize and rededicate ourselves to addressing the challenges to equality and opportunity that many Hispanics still face. Migration is a natural and vital occurrence in the world, from the iconic monarch butterflies whose migration path is enriched by their role as pollinators, to our immigrant kin who make the difficult, life-altering decision to flee from their home countries to seek a better life for themselves and their families. Benton County stands in solidarity with the majority of Americans calling for an immediate end to the separation of families at the border, closing of child detention camps, and establishment of a compassionate process for refugee asylum requests. We value respecting human rights, equality, and dignity, fundamental humanist values. The undeniable human rights violations happening on U.S. soil must stop. In reflecting on our nation's rich Hispanic heritage, let us take pride in our unique and vibrant history, and recommit to a shared future of freedom, prosperity, and opportunity for all. Therefore, hereby proclaim that September 15th to October 15th, 2020, is Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, and encourages all residents to join in this observance." Now, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to read the translation of this. It will be somewhat slower, since my, some of my Spanish language skills are fading away. Durante el mes nacional de herencia hispana, hacemos una pausa para celebrar las inmensas contribuciones que estos individuos han hecho a nuestra nación desde su inicio hasta la fecha. Y la historia de los hispanos en los Estados Unidos comienza desde antes de la fundación de nuestra nación, con raíces en la tierra como pueblos indígenas que han moldeado el tejido de este país. Los hispanos han superado grandes obstaculos para perseguir y prosperar en todos los sectores de nuestra sociedad. Con valores durados de fe y familia, trabajo y sacrificio, los hispanos han preservado la rica cultura de generaciones pasadas al mismo tiempo que han contribuido poderosamente a la promesa de futuro de nuestra nación. Y con un tema nacional, siéntete orgulloso de tu pasado y abraza el futuro. En celebración del condado de Benton celebra las historias, culturas, todas las cultivaciones hechas por los hispanoamericanos que tienen sus raíces en España, México, el Caribe, Centro y Sudamerica, y todos los que seguran haciendo en el futuro." Got to scroll down here. Este mes oramos a las comunidades hispanoamericanas cuando reconocemos y volviemos, dedicamos al hacer frente a los desibios de igualdad y oportunidades que muchos hispanos aún enfrentan. La migración es un hecho natural y vital en el mundo. Desde las icónicas mariposas monarcas, cuya ruta de migración es- monarcas cuya ruta de migración es enriquece con su papel de pobladores, hasta nuestros parientes inmigrantes que toman la difícil decisión de huir de sus países de origen para buscar una vida mejor para ellos y sus familias. Y en solidaridad, el condado Benton se une con la mayoría de los estatamentenses que piden el fin inmediato de la separación de familias en la frontera. El cierre de campos de detención de niños y el establecimiento de un proceso compasivo para solicitadas de hacinos y refugiados. Valoramos el respetar los derechos humanos, la igualdad y la dignidad de los valores humanistas fundamentales. No se puede negar que estas son poblaciones de derechos humanos que están ocurriendo en territorio de Estados Unidos, y eso debe parar. Al reflexionar sobre la rica herencia y cultura hispana de nuestra nación, nos engullecemos de nuestra historia única y vibrante, y volvemos a comprometernos con su futuro compartido de libertad, prosperidad, y de comunidades para todos. Por lo tanto, se declara aquí que el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 2020, el año 2020, es el mes de la herencia hispana en el condado Benton y su ánima a toda la comunidad a unirse a esta celebración. Adoptada este día, 1er de septiembre de, en el año 2020, septiembre 1, 2020. Y se ferminará este día, 1er de septiembre de 2020, septiembre 1, 2020. Okay. So there you have it. One of the things about the Spanish language, it condenses a lot of language into big, long words. And so thank you for sitting through that. And therefore, I would move that we adopt these, this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well done, Annabelle.
You know, the harder language to try to do is German, let me tell you. It really bunches a lot of words together.
All right. We have three, proclaiming the month of September as suicide awareness and prevention. Danielle Brown, are you ready to go?
I am. Hello again, thanks, commissioners. I'm not going to follow Annabelle's, Commissioner Armio's, reading in Spanish, so please, that's a big thing to follow. So I'm going to go ahead and read through this. September is the suicide prevention and awareness month for mental health conditions. So this month, September 2020, is National Suicide Prevention Week and National Recovery Month, when millions of people around the world join their voices to share a message of hope and healing. And whereas these observances are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people do recover. And whereas in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are more needed than ever. And whereas Benton County residents should be able to access high-quality prevention, support rehabilitation and treatment services that lead to recovery and a healthy lifestyle. Whereas everyday Benton County people enter into treatment, into behavioral health services and community supports, and begin the road to wellness and recovery. Whereas resiliency begins in life within families, daycares, schools, and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan. Whereas recovery and wellness encompass the whole individual, including mind, body, spirit, and community. Whereas Benton County's plan for suicide prevention urges all residents to play a role in suicide prevention and promoting health and wellness. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts, loss, and substance use are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and community at large. And whereas it is essential that we educate residents about suicide, mental health, substance abuse problems, and the ways they affect all people in the community. And whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, coworkers, and providers to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate services and support. And whereas Suicide Prevention Week and Recovery Month inspires millions of Americans to raise awareness, build resiliency, and find hope. Now it is therefore ordered that Benton County Commissioners proclaim the month of September 2020 and Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month, finding hope, building resiliency, and supporting recovery.
I would move that we adopt the proclamation of proclaiming September as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, Recovery and Awareness Month. I don't think I have quite all the words there.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you for the reading, Danielle, and more importantly, thank you for your efforts on the ground, putting this proclamation into practice. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malone, under new business, 8.3, I think that's something that we did not talk about today, but I do also have this topic on goal-setting for next week.
I think that was more my intent. There's efforts, whether it's AOC or trying to identify priorities, maybe for the special session that might come up this month, but more importantly, getting ready for the regular session after the first of the year. And so I didn't have any great list or grand plans for the topic, but, and AOC has some deadlines for the month of September to get, I think, a short list of priorities from all the counties. And I think Benton County would be well-served to put some effort into compiling our wish list. And I think sometime this month, we will be, we will have an opportunity to talk to Senator Gelsner and Representative Rayfield on their perspective on what's going on at the state level. And as Benton County starts to develop our biennial budget, that kind of information, I think, is really important. So that's all I had on that topic. And Joe, thank you. With all my corrections, I might have missed it.
I have a follow-up point on that. We do have our district meeting for AOC this Friday at 10:00 a.m.
Right.
And so we will be discussing legislative priorities at that meeting as well. So yes, I think it would behoove all of us to come to that meeting prepared and with specific ideas. And if you have anything you would like me to share now with the staff person who's going to be guiding us through that meeting, Kristin and Paul, I would be happy to convey those in my ongoing conversation. I do know that one of the issues that is likely to come up is the fact that Commissioner Lindsay of Lynn County is asking that the extension publication growing be defunded by Lynn County because of a letter that was written in the publication by the acting extension lead of 4OSU. And so that's likely to be a hot topic at that meeting. And I think that the other topics that we're likely to discuss are probably going to focus on funding and COVID response and how we can build back better and stronger after COVID using these funds strategically. But I don't, I would welcome your input before then so that I can help shape the agenda a little bit more if you want to do that. And the other is that we have a legislative day on Monday, the 14th, but we also have that day reserved for interviews with chief financial officer and finalist. So we may want to do a little dividing and conquering of who attends the AOC meeting and who is participating in the interviews. I don't know if it comes down to that.
Commissioners, we won't know till tomorrow as to how many finalists we'll have, likely finalists, so we don't know exactly what amount of time we're going to require on your calendar for that day. And I guess it could be two and a half to three hours potentially on that day that we would need your involvement.
So we have a little bit of a time crunch and time conflict, but—
Well, that was my intent for putting it on the agenda, is September is busy, and the better organized we are and coordinated, the better chance we have of being successful.
Yep.
Anything else on legislative matters? We are at item nine, other. I'm not hearing any other—
I didn't see anything.
Commissioners, I just have one point of clarification. Tomorrow, we have our leadership team meeting, our management team meeting, starts at 1:30. Typically, we've all just been joining in on that via go-to meeting and not assembling in this room. So that was my plan for tomorrow, is that you would just all, department heads will join from go-to meeting, you'll join from go-to meeting, and that we would not be coming together for tomorrow.
That works fine.
So I just wanted to make sure that worked for you.
Yep, it does.
Yep.
Okay.
It doesn't work as well as in-person, but we'll, may have to wait a while for that.
Agreed.
Anything else? Oh, refresh my memory. Vance?
Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
Well—
About going into executive session?
Not that one. So the proposal is to move into executive session once we have ended the go-to meeting. We're going to take about a 10-minute break to give John and his crew to, a chance to shut down the cameras, also for Alyssa to contact Teresa, who will call in via the Polycom, to be our record keeper for that executive session.
So a 10-minute break would put us at 12:15.
Okay.
And do I close the regular meeting?
No, you're going to recess the public, recess this meeting. We will reconvene in executive session.
Okay.
You'll come out of exec session and then close, close the public.
So do we then go ahead and shut this down, or not yet?
You can shut that down, unless it's got the information that I sent to you.
Well, that's in a different location.
Perfect.
So we will recess our board meeting for 10 minutes and reconvene at 12:15 in executive session. So thank you very much.
So I can leave this meeting.